We will return to this space, we'll leave the space for that non-public meeting and then, Brooke, do you have the RSA in front of you? I'm sorry, I folded it up.
I haven't, I haven't even opened it.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry.
Can you use the microphones, please? We can't hear you.
All right.
Same problem.
Do you like me to make the motion? Sure. Hold on just a second. Have you turned it up? Can you hear us now?
No.
Ed, can you turn it up? Okay, can you hear us now?
No. Can you close the microphone?
The feedback is terrible. Can you hear us now?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, we can hear.
Barely. Can you turn it up some more? Sorry. We get a, there's a tipping point between feedback and you're being able to hear. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Very good. So as I said, we've called the meeting to order. We begin the meeting as the agenda was posted with a non-public session, which requires a roll call vote. And we will read the RSA under which the non-public session is warranted, as we always do.
I move that the board go into non-public session pursuant to RSA 91-A colon 3, Roman numeral 2L, consideration of legal advice provided by a legal counsel, either in writing or orally, to one or more members of the public body, even where a legal counsel is not present.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
We need a roll call.
Okay, that's right. I just said roll call and then I can hear everyone.
Brooke Arthur, aye.
Rabbi.
Carol Roy, aye.
Amy, aye.
Amy, aye.
We will be back just as soon as we can, please stay.
Can you repeat your RSA, please? The 193 colon 2, letter L.
It's letter L, which is different than we usually use.
Usually in the agenda, too.
It's in the agenda. Correct.
Yeah, the agenda's on the website, if you go to the Hollis School Board website.
Okay, we are back in, in public session. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. At this point, I would like to introduce Attorney James O'Shaughnessy, and he is going to give us a summary of the investigation that was completed regarding the conflict of interest complaint that was brought forward against Chairman Fareed. James?
You're up, Jim.
All right. Hello, everyone. This is James O'Shaughnessy, counsel for the Hollis School District. I've been asked to provide legal guidance to the board in response to the complaint alleging that a board member, Ms. Fareed, engaged in a conflict of interest vote when she supported a mask mandate earlier in, in the fall, summer of 2021. As part of, as part of the process, and after reviewing the minutes and speaking to my client, in the month of November, I actually hired an outside investigator from the law firm Gallagher Callahan and Gartrell. Her name is Attorney Anne Jennis. She's a veteran attorney who has experience, a longtime member of the Public Defender's Office. She's also professionally, what she, in her work, she is, she holds a certification in doing workplace investigations, and she's an experienced neutral investigator. Anne doesn't have any experience, nor does her firm, in representing Hollis School District, Co-op, or SAU41. So I thought it would be a good idea to have a neutral outside attorney conduct the investigation into, into the factual allegations regarding the complaint. Ms. Jennis interviewed as part of the investigation. She, she reviewed the complaint and the attached documents. She reviewed video footage from Hollis School Board minutes. She reviewed a significant amount of publicly accessible records regarding the patents held by Ms. Fareed's husband and the company that Ms. Fareed, Ms. Fareed's husband works for, called Hollensworth Invos. And she was able to, to review a lot of these public records, and all the records really relevant to this because they're available electronically online. Ms. Fareed was interviewed by Ms. Jennis last week, and I received a copy of the report from Ms. Jennis earlier this week, and I provided that to the school board earlier today. The executive summary of the report is, based on a more likely-than-not standard, the investigator found that the patents attributed to Ms. Fareed's husband were not actually owned by Ms. Fareed's husband, but were owned by Ms. Fareed's husband's company. And that Ms. Fareed's husband and Ms. Fareed do not have a financial or pecuniary interest in the use of face masks in the Hollis School District. They don't have a financial or pecuniary interest in the mask mandate. And so the vote to approve a mask mandate was not a vote for which Ms. Fareed was or had a conflict at any point in time. The investigator also, after interviewing Ms. Fareed and reviewing the documents, found that it did not support the conclusion that Ms. Fareed had any other kind of interest in the use of face masks in the district, and that she didn't believe that she would benefit in any way when she took the vote in the mask mandate. It's a pretty straightforward, I mean, it was a pretty straightforward investigation. The allegation, on its face, seemed to make a sort of what we call in the legal firm, the legal realm, an attenuated or remote claim that there was a connection between Ms. Fareed's husband's patents and her vote. This is not, I mean, I represent a great many school districts in New Hampshire, and our firm represents a lot of municipalities in New Hampshire and in Maine. The type of conflicts that typically trigger a violation is where a board member is voting on a contract, for example, between her family's company and the district itself. You know, that's the kind of contract where there would be a conflict because the, the board member would receive a pretty clear direct, and I think direct is a very important word here, where the board member would receive a direct financial benefit from voting on that contract. Under New Hampshire law, the, the standard is the same in both the, the law as well as your policy, and the standard is, there's a conflict if the board member's interests in the outcome of the matter, if their interests would create a direct personal or pecuniary benefit to that board member. And that's from the Atherton v. Concord case in 1968. And basically, in order for the board member to have a conflict of interest to disqualify them, that conflict must be immediate and definite and capable of demonstration, not remote, uncertain, contingent, and speculative. And those are, those terms are terms that are directly out of that case. So, you know, the, the allegation here that Ms. Fareed's husband's company, for which he is an employee, not an owner, doesn't, doesn't create an immediate indefinite conflict. At most, it's a hypothetical speculative or contingent conflict that really doesn't manifest when you do the investigation and look at the actual facts. School Board policy, BCB, basically adopts the same conflict of interest standard, and it prohibits board members who have a direct pecuniary interest in a contract with the itself wouldn't even be triggered by a mass vote in the first place. Um, so, you know, that's, that's my legal analysis of the findings as applied to the law and policy. There really is no, um, there is no basis for, um, Ms. Fareed to, to, to have anything remotely close to a conflict of interest. Um, and more importantly, I'd like to also clarify that there was a, um, I think a really mis, a, a misapplied, uh, standard in, in the complaint. Someone asserted, or the complainant asserted, that the vote on the policy was a quasi-judicial vote, and therefore the person, um, they, they, I think, were attempting to apply like a, a, uh, a diff, like a, a different standard that would have applied to a quasi-judicial vote. Um, and first of all, that's inaccurate. The adoption of a mask policy was a legislative act, and when, when acting in a legislative capacity, boards aren't held to the same standard they're held to when they're voting in a quasi-judicial capacity. So, you know, that, that standard, even though this wouldn't even create that standard, doesn't apply in this situation. This wasn't a quasi-judicial vote. This was clearly a legislative policy adoption. Um, at the end of the complaint, I'll just note that the, um, the, the complainant, I think it's somewhat vague, but they threatened to file a complaint with the State Board of Education and the Commissioner of the Department of Education, if the school board, I think, doesn't invalidate its vote on the mask requirement. And I would like to point out, just for the board and the public, um, who may be confused or misled by that, that the Department of Education and the State Board of Education are actually separate entities, uh, with, they're not the same thing. They're separate entities, uh, with different roles and responsibilities under New Hampshire law, and importantly, neither actually has jurisdiction or authority under the law to resolve this particular issue. They don't have, um, jurisdiction over school board policy, uh, or health and safety policy enactments. Um, so, you know, for, for, for purposes of where this goes next, the, the only entity that would have jurisdiction would be Superior Court in New Hampshire. Um, and I, I mean, I would see this, and I do see this, as a collateral attack at the mask mandate itself. Uh, we know, because it's been well-publicized, that there have already been attempts to, to attack the mask mandate in New Hampshire and various litigation across the state, and those have, those have been, um, unsuccessful to date, and I, I would, I would, uh, I feel comfortable saying that I, I'm pretty sure that this complaint that filed, the Superior Court, would likely meet the same fate. That's all, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, Jim, from the board?
Um, at this point, I would like to take a motion to accept the investigative report as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Um, all in favor? Opposed?
It appears that this matter has, Providence has spoken, has come to a conclusion for this meeting. We are going to go ahead with our, uh, agenda. I appreciate everyone's patience as, uh, this matter has been pursued. I'm gonna try to get my thoughts together here. Um, our next agenda item, our, is agenda adjustments.
Uh, we don't have any requests tonight.
Okay. Any board members' agenda adjustments that you need to make? Thank you. The next item, as usual, is correspondence, resignations, nominations.
Correct. I just wanted to provide the board, uh, with an update. Uh, as you know, unfortunately, we have been dealing with some rise in our COVID cases. Um, going back to November 12th until about the 23rd, we had seen the highest number of cases in Hollis and Brookline that we've seen. Uh, we went from, uh, a typical 30 to 40, all of a sudden spiking to 72, 77, in that range. Uh, we stayed that way pretty much until we came back from, uh, the holidays. You might have noticed we, we are starting to see another dip, which seems to be the trend. Uh, right now, uh, we went from 66 on the 29th to, um, 32 this afternoon. So there's been a big dip. There are currently, uh, 23 cases in Hollis, six of those are new, and there are nine cases in Brookline, and there are no new cases in Brookline. So we're really seeing those numbers come down. Uh, we continue to evaluate, uh, masks. Uh, we are presently in a period where a number of, uh, families are choosing to get vaccinated, and we thank them for that, and we respect those people that, uh, have other choices. And the plan, from my viewpoint, is that we will, uh, remain without masks through the holidays. We'll do some assessment in the next couple of weeks to see how vaccination appointments are going. It's becoming very difficult to get appointment, and the other thing that happened, um, and not that it directly affects Hollis, but in Brookline, as you may be aware, we had an outbreak at CSDA. Uh, so for a pretty significant group of students, uh, they are unable to get the vaccine until they go through a period of time where, um, their body is allowed to rest, and then they are able to get their first dose. So right now, if everything were to stay the same and cases would continue to come down, I'd be probably looking at, uh, Martin Luther King Weekend to come back from that in a mask optional environment. Now, obviously, we just heard word of a, a new variant. Um, like probably many people, I don't know a lot about it yet. Uh, I followed the, uh, Dr. Chan the other day, cause he had some updates on that, and it's very kind of unknown, so I don't know. Uh, there's one group that feels that will be helpful to the pandemic, uh, and there's another group that is concerned about what it may bring. So, we will follow that closely, but that's where we are today. Uh, I would like to thank our, our teachers, our administrators, our students and their families. Uh, the numbers in the Hollis District have remained very, very low, uh, and I think that's a, a lot of credit to families. You know, if their child is experiencing symptoms, they have kept them home. They've worked closely with our two fantastic nurses in the district. Uh, and I think that has kind of allowed us to get to the Thanksgiving holiday in pretty good shape, and we have about 13 school days to the, uh, winter holiday break, and we will be watching kind of the end of this week, the beginning of next week, to see if we see a spike from Thanksgiving. And I'll take any questions you may have on, on COVID.
If we found ourselves, um, coming back after Martin Luther King Day, everything remaining the same, and you find, uh, this opportunity to maybe go mask optional, is there any action you would need from, from this board to be able to make that? Do you have the tools that you need right now to, to go ahead and make that a call?
Yes. When you adopted the, uh, the plan, you gave me the ability to either institute masks or pull masks away. Um, and I'm very comfortable doing that. We made it through last year. Uh, we do utilize some local nurses and pediatricians and that, that have children in our schools and provide us help and guidance. Uh, and then we participate, uh, regularly for, uh, uh, state calls, and our nurses are in regular contract with DHHS, and, uh, keep me well updated.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it for what I have.
I guess I wanted to add that I noticed in the news article that Governor Sununu announced, uh, statewide increased locations for booster shots. So we can als, we might also see an improvement in transmissibility through boosters being available to the high school kids, et cetera.
Correct. And right now in Hollis, it's just about, I think it's about 72, 73% with one dose, uh, and it's about 65% that are fully vaccinated. So I think that's the other thing, our community has gone out and chosen to get the vaccine, and I think that helps us as well.
You know, I spoke with my children's pediatrician. She's a local doctor who treats many kids in both Hughes and HPS, and she is very much on board in making sure the masks stay on through the holidays for exactly the reasons you outlined, so I support that, Andy. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there further correspondence, resignations, nominations?
Nope, that's it.
Excellent. Uh, we have approval of minutes next on the agenda.
Okay. Uh, just a moment.
Scrolling.
Scrolling, scrolling. Let's go scrolling. Uh, okay. I move to approve the Hollis School Board minutes from November 3rd, 2021 with the following amendments. Page three, line one, insert quarry following superintendent. Page 10, line 30, remove "and" before "abuse." Page 16, line 10, replace educated with educating. Page 18, line nine, replace home with him. Page 19, line 39, replace he with she. Page 20, line 22, correct the spelling of quarry.
Second. All in favor? Thank you.
And that's it.
Terrific. So that takes care of all the minutes, and now we have public input. As usual, we have a three-minute limit on individual comments. Feel free to step up and first come, first serve. A reminder, if you could say your name and, and address clearly for the minutes, thank you.
Certainly. My name is Aaron Pincasek. I live at 133 Dow Road, uh, in Hollis. Um, th- thank you first of all for your attention to the complaint that's been filed, and for the attorney's attention to that as well. It's important that that be looked at in detail because it's an important issue. Um, I have, I have one question. So the attorney that we just heard speak, is he representing SAU 41, or is, is he representing the school board?
He is the attorney for the Hollis School District.
So he would be representing the SAU?
No, the Hollis School District. The SAU is the umbrella that represents our services, the three entities, which is Hollis, Brookline, the cooperative school district.
So, Mr. Aaron?
Yes.
The thing that's, um, helpful to think about is that we have four legal entities within schooling in Hollis and Brookline.
Right.
The SAU is a state agency.
So who's paying him?
Hang, two seconds, two seconds. And then each of the two school districts that are elementary schools are state agencies, and the co-op's a state agency, all under that SAU 41 umbrella. So he did this work for the Hollis School Board and the Hollis School District. So the Hollis School District and Hollis taxpayers pay the fees for the attorney who worked, the attorneys who worked on this case.
So, so the school?
So no Brookline taxpayer would be paying for this.
So the school district is paying him?
That's right.
Okay. All right, and then, uh, also, I'd like to get a copy of the attorney's report in writing, if I could.
Absolutely.
Okay, that would be very good. Um, you know, I, I, I heard his results. Um, I have discomfort with his findings. He claimed that you were a legislative body in the school board. You're not. You don't make law here. You're a judicial branch, right? You enforce law. You're not legislative. Right? Now, you're shaking your head, no, but I'm, I'm, you, you don't make law here. You can't make law in the school board.
Legislative is like when you're-
Point of order. I just want to get, be careful that we don't, um, begin to engage in question and answer.
Thank you.
During our, during our public-
No, no, she's correcting me. I apologize, sir.
Fair, fair enough. Uh, my bad as well, right? But, so this is a conflict of interest that I still believe to be real, and, uh, we're gonna take this to the state. Uh, it needs to go there, right? Because you can't ignore it. You can't ignore it. I mean, the last time I testified in front of you, I made that point probably harder than I should have, right? But, um, you're, you're, you're ignoring facts here, and your attorney, I think, has reached conclusions that are inaccurate, and so we're not done with this. Thank you.
Karen Bridger, Buttonwood Drive. I would like to, uh, thank everyone for their work that they do for our students.
Good evening. My name is Maureen Masterson, Milton Place. I just also want to thank you for all the hard work you're doing. I know you have a lot of pressure to, um, remove the mask requirements in the Hollis School District. I just request that you please hold the line, um, and keep them because it is working. It is working to reduce transmission in the schools. It is not, the, no mask requirements in, that are outside the schools, is resulting in actual transmissions. My son, who didn't even get infected, missed 11 school days last month, okay? And it wasn't even because of an exposure in the school. It was from an exposure in a place for that, that, um, was outside of the school. And that exposure resulted in transmission and a death. So I really, it did. Not of a, not of a child, but of a person, of a grown-up, okay? So I really, really would like for this to, to just go away. We're all sick of it, but the masks are important, and they're really doing a good job. The kids, they don't care. The grown-ups clearly do, but the kids, they're rolling within. So please, just hold the line. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Tiffany Testo, 101 Moore Hill Road. Um, I had a few things to say about the masks and about the legal, um, statement that was made. The first thing I want to say about the masks is that, um, I too support you holding the line because I think that the representation of voice that you hear, as you know, is not the representation of all. And there have been meetings where there's just as many parents upset at, um, you know, wanting masks in some of the older grades. So you may not know that, that at the co-op, um, there were parents that want masks back. I am a teacher that works in a school that has, we were out of school for an entire year, and now we are back in the school. We're a Massachusetts school, so it's different. We will wear masks till the end of the year and then some, because that's what the science states. In terms, I'm sorry, I have another comment. Um, so if I should sit down to, I would like three minutes on each subject, so I just want to thank you and ask you to hold on that, and I'll go sit down. I'll come back up if I can have three minutes on the other.
Hi, Chip Wysbloski, Farm Pond Lane. Um, I would like to just point out that Ms. Fareed kind of presented herself as some sort of a mask expert, and it's my understanding that her husband is, his name is on the patent, and I believe that your influence, your lying, saying that, presenting yourself as a, some sort of an expert because your husband hold, his name is on a patent, unduly influenced this board, and the vote was basically done with that. Um, the vote was based on your own supposed expert testimony. That's something that I'm going to bring up to the state. It isn't over yet. Um, that's all. Thank you very much, and thank you for your time.
Hello, it's me again, 101 Moore Hill Road, Tiffany, and I want to say that I am sorry to the students, and I'm sorry to this board, and I'm sorry to our community that we have wasted so much time on trying to manipulate, slander a person. It's an absolute ridiculous argument that has been posed, that this is a conflict of interest, and I am sorry. I want to also note, the board should know this, that you were voted in by a community that wants you to do the hard, hard work. And the other thing I want to, to say is that, and, and I understand you need to use legal service, but this is ridiculous that our taxpayers have to pay for this. And so, um, I don't know. I understand you need legal service, but the fact that our money is being wasted when it can be spent on other things is really an issue to me, and I think that the finding has been stated. So I hope that we can move on to some more important things. Thank you.
Any further comments?
Hi, uh, Mary Ann Damian, Farm Pond Lane. Um, I just want to speak, I'm, I apologize for what that lady has gone through, but she did say that all children do not care about wearing masks, and that is not the case. I don't think you could speak for all children. Maybe someone specific child would not care, but I'm sure there are some kids that don't wear masks and don't want to wear them and find them very uncomfortable. So I think that needs to be thought out. There's kids with special needs, there's kids with allergies, there's kids with other medical problems, that wearing a mask is very hard on them. And emotionally, um, we should all be very aware that this causes problems, and they don't get to see each other's face, they don't get to see expressions. get to see each other's face. They don't get to see expressions. They don't know if someone's happy or if someone's sad. And this really mentally is abuse for younger children and even older children. And as a community, we should know that there are a lot of issues going on that our kids need help. And in order to not have a mask, in order to feel like they could communicate with each other, is extremely important. Sure, it's important for everybody to stay healthy, but at what price are we paying? What price are we giving to have our kids not to be emotionally stable or to feel good about themselves or to be able to look at other kids and to know that those kids want to be part of their life? All you see is eyes. Right now, all I see is eyes looking at me. I don't know what you're thinking. You could be thinking anything. But if your mask wasn't on, at least I could see an expression. So, just think about little kids and even older kids that don't have the whereabouts that we have as adults. They don't. They're just not emotionally mature enough. So, sure, that's great that you say it's keeping them safe and keeping them healthy, but at what price? And are you really keeping them healthy? Like, what health costs are you really giving here? So, that's all I have to say.
Further comment?
I'm concerned now to my fellow board members that the agenda said public input was for 6:55, and we moved ahead in the course of the meeting a few minutes faster than we had anticipated. So, I would like to have a sense of the board that should a member of the public arrive who came in particular, who wants to make a public comment, that we could revisit, reopening public comment for any new arrivals who have, you know, who, because we got ahead of our agenda, missed this particular window of time. Would that be suitable with the board?
I mean, for a limited period of time, sure. If they were going to try to be close. I'm fine with that if we move to the principal's report. And if in that time somebody comes in, absolutely, I'd like to hear what they have to say.
Have we already closed public input?
I'm sorry?
We haven't yet closed public input, right?
No, we haven't. And I'm talking during it. I've offered, anyone who wants to step up and speak is absolutely free to. Since no one has stepped up, I'm taking a moment to run the clock a little in case folks are arriving.
Right.
So, to Carol's point, our next agenda item is principal's report at 7:10. So, if any member of the public who is trying to come in order to make a public comment or give public input prior to 7:10, then I think we should, I'd like to ask you to be, to forbear on the closing of public input.
Under these circumstances, I wouldn't have any objection to it. But I would like to point out that on our agenda says our times are approximate and they do change. However, I am sensitive to the fact that we're going through a difficult time. There's a lot of debate in the community, particularly around some of the operational requirements that we put in place. So, I would just say sometime after the posted 6:55, that we've revisited, we might see a need to open it up again.
For newcomers.
But we should take, we should evaluate it at that time.
I think for anyone new who arrives. All right, great. And we're a small town, and we care about each other a great deal. And everyone's view is important. All right, let's move ahead to the principal's report, seeing no further public input for the time being. And should someone arrive who hasn't, had come to make public comment, then we would-
I would just like to add a clarification. We did hear in our public input some concerns about the findings of our attorney. And I would like to point out that our attorney was really speaking from a standpoint of our policies and other aspects that govern the district. The findings of the actual investigation was held by someone other than our attorney.
Correct.
And a disinterested third party that does this work. So, I don't want folks to think that our attorney kind of did all this. The actual document was done by a third party that is not connected to this district whatsoever.
Actually, if I may ask, members of the public who are still here, did you understand that from what our attorney, James Shawn, as he said, we used a third attorney, a second attorney, not related to the board's other work, to do the investigation? Not we, the board did. I was not involved. All right. Yes, you can talk to the superintendent after. Absolutely.
Yep. At the end of the meeting, you can get a copy from Andy.
All right. On with principal's report, please.
Said at the end of the meeting, you can obtain a copy from Andy. They'll also be available at the SAU office, correct, Andy?
Yep.
Absolutely. Thank you, Aaron.
Thanks, Aaron.
The principal's report. I just want to highlight November 29th to December 3rd was a scholastic book fair. And I'd like to thank all the families and children that participated. It was, it's always amazing to me, the excitement, you know, and the fun and kids getting their books. You forget how much it means when you're going home with that first book for a lot of our younger ones.
I saw the excitement this afternoon firsthand.
There you go. Trimester one closes December 3rd, which is this Friday. Parents will be able to view report cards on December 17th. And then we'll be wrapping it up and moving into the holiday break. A couple of things of note on the building grounds. I just want to let you know that the new fencing around the playground structure is complete. And the fencing along the property from the playground down the lane to the field is in the process of being completed. And we will have an exit gate there because that's our emergency exit in case we can't go down Drury Lane. Officer Kush has been away getting PD on the DARE program, and he'll be starting that up. And we're looking forward to that. He has been a welcome addition. His excitement and his presence brings a lot to our kids in the hallways. At HPS, we started a new event, which is student learning about chess. And it's not always in the way you think. Yes, the game will be played, but students learning about chess characters, decision-making and solutions. As students become more familiar with the games, we hope to induce student chess mentors. And it all began Monday, the 29th. So, that's something that was put out by the Department of Ed. I think it came as a result of the movie, The Queen's Gambit. And it was very much looking forward. And Paula jumped on, and she did a couple of trainings up at the state. And it's really exciting to see the critical thinking skills as the kids sit down to play that game. In terms of the holidays, again, we worked with Laura Landerman, and we were able to send a large number of cards overseas to our soldiers who are on duty. And we really thank them for all their efforts. Our enrollment really hasn't changed. And we stay pretty current with class sizes. And that's it for the principal's report.
That's great. I love that holiday card project. My son, during COVID, when school shut down, he had a civics class he had to do a project for, and he made 500 cards handmade and handwritten and everything for her. And I was very pleased to be able to do that.
Until they did that on my daughter's class, I had no idea she knew how to draw camo. But she's quite good at it.
Excellent. All right. And again, enrollment seems not to have shifted dramatically. So, we're stable. That's great. All right. Next on our agenda, we have discussion of fiscal year 2023, the draft SAU budget.
Correct. As you know, we've been going through the SAU budget as we prepare for our governing board meeting on December 16th. We, I believe it was a week ago, Monday, met with the Budget Subcommittee, which is made up of, has one member from each of the three school boards. It has SAU representation and a member from the Hollis Budcom, the Co-op Budcom, and the Brookline Finance Committee. And they have supported this budget. It has been discussed with the Hollis Budcom, and they have supported it. The major adjustment, if it was just, if we weren't asking for a new position, which I'll talk about in a minute, it would actually be, the adjusted budget would be actually higher than what we're requesting. But we are asking a, for a new position. And I put that in your board packet. And I highlighted and underlined some of the changes. From the last time we sat here, we went to each of the boards and budget committees and SAU Subcommittee, and they offered some feedback. And I'd like to thank all who participated in that. Because the first thing is when we went through the position again, what came out loud and clear was that it is basically a compliance position. And members of the Budget Committee, specifically Mike Harris, who's always been a wealth of knowledge and a longtime veteran of school board and Budget Committee, really felt that we should call it a compliance and a communication specialist because that's what our focus was on all the different things that are coming up. So, we made those changes. We also added letter B on page one, assist with the completion of all annual Department of Education, state and federal required surveys. This could include the homeschool count, teacher attainment salary, board membership, civil rights data, all of those different things. Each year, the legislature comes up with new policies or laws that they enact, which have been very beneficial for schools. And they have raised the accountability of all schools across the state, which has been great. But at the same time, each of those surveys has become more time-consuming. And each grant has become more time-consuming. So, we really look at this position as somebody that could assist both Gina and I with a number of those pieces that we have to file every year. Letter G, we added assist with the writing of compliance and communication policies and procedures for handling sensitive information. One of the policies I, we've been discussing is our federal grants piece and procurement and those type of things. And having an extra set of eyes to look at those type of things for procurement would be greatly appreciated. They would work with the Assistant Superintendent, this is letter R, to communicate and execute general assurances related to all state and federal grants. Sometimes I think people understand that we're four separate entities. But being four separate entities means that every grant we have has four separate components. So, if I'm in a K to 12 district like where I live in Londonderry, I have to do general assurances once. Here, they have to be done for each of our grants. So, that's Hollis, Brookline, and the Co-op. And that is just very time-consuming. And because you're a separate district, you have separate readers. And what that does, it means that what Carol might accept for the Brookline District, Amy rejected and sent back to us for the Hollis District, even though it's the same agency in the state. So, it sounds like it should be like, oh, you do it once, you submit it, and you're done. That's not necessarily how the state works. Other than that, there were no other changes to the job description. We will be discussing that again at the public hearing December 16th. So, anybody who is interested in coming to talk about the SAU budget, that will be held at Captain Samuel Douglas Academy in Brookline on the 16th, beginning at 6:00. And the public hearing will probably start about 6:15. With the chair's permission, I will go on to the draft Hollis budget.
Please do.
Okay. As I always do, I like to start at the back because that's where the final numbers are. First of all, I'd like the board to know that we have reached guidance as given to us by the Budcom. And I'd like to commend Kelly and the Budget Committee. This process has become streamlined over the last several years. You know, the Budget Committee knows where we're coming in. They provide us a number. If there's an exception or an unusual thing that's occurring that year, we can ask for relief for guidance, and we have the opportunity to explain that. So, it's really become a very positive process and resulted in our being able to bring forth budgets that don't mean we get everything we want, but make sure that educationally, every single year, we're moving forward. So, right now, we are looking at a 3.2% increase for the operating budget. We will have a warrant article for a contingency fund, which we have every year. We will have the SAU Trust Fund of $23,970, which is actually the rent we collect from the districts because Hollis owns the SAU building. We are requesting 150 in the maintenance trust to do repairs. One of the big items that's in the maintenance trust coming up this year is this gym floor. It's pretty much been in the state for many, many years. And then our annual request of $25,000 to the Special Ed Trust Fund. We still have more discussions around the SAU bond. We put a placeholder in, but we want to look at that in light of what the information we have from the lease committee, in light of the work we've done in the past, also in light of what's potentially going on in other districts. So, because we only have one taxpayer. So, if something is going on at the Co-op that's a facilities expense, we try to balance those two. And the last couple of years, we've put the focus into the Hollis schools with the lease articles to do all our lighting, our heating and all those ventilation issues. And then the SAU budget, as you know, is divided between the three entities, the Hollis District, the Brookline District, and the Co-op District. So, the apportionment of the SAU budget for this year would be $625,021 for Hollis, which provides all your HR services, all your finance services, your accounts payable, accounts receivable, is responsible for your audits. All of those things are kind of under the SAU umbrella. And in many ways, it's a very cost-effective way of approaching that by sharing, A, one superintendent, one business manager. If they were three separate districts, then you would have to have three superintendents and three business managers by law. So, if the voters were to go to the polls and pass all requests, that would bring the total budget up by 3.8% from this year. Please understand that we're still finalizing discussions with our HESA Union and still in discussions with our Hollis Education Association, which is our teachers. And those would not be in the budget. Those are separate warrant articles that the voters get to vote up or down. Also, in your packet, you have the new items piece. And I'm very excited because this is a, this is a very good educational budget. You know, there are a lot of things here. We have been able to maintain up to this point, a directed sub for food service and a directed classroom sub, which will really help us out. We are increasing, based on need, the music teacher from .6 to .8. We are increasing the Special Ed Secretary's additional days. Our numbers have grown within the district, and she had typically been a four-day-a-week person. And we just cannot survive that anymore. We are increasing three power positions based on student needs. Our powers are attached to students. And as the board knows, we've tried to bring in most of our special ed programming in-house because we believe, first of all, it's better for our students. And second of all, it is a cost avoidance. We will be, as we have done historically, sharing an English as a second language teacher with the Co-op. If we were not to share that, going out and looking for two part-time positions, one here and one at the Co-op, the likelihood of finding somebody would be nil. As you know, right now, it's very, very difficult to fill positions. We're still looking for power positions. We're still looking for custodians. So, if there's anybody out there interested, we would welcome a call. Academics, it's basically, you'll see that from what we started to where we are in this round is the exact same. And we're excited about that because we try not to make any, you know, changes to the academic portion. New computer equipment, it's not that we aren't getting it. We used our SRF funds and targeted those needs through those funds. And we'll be coming back in January because, as I informed the board, we were approved for E-rate funds that can be used to purchase computers. So, we get a grant of about $215,000. That is broken down into the Co-op, the Brookline, and the Hollis. Then it will be used to purchase Chromebooks, Chromebook cases, as well as a insurance policy, I can, what do you call it?
The Google license?
The license and the child drops it.
Oh.
Yeah. So, it's covered for the three years of life. We are upgrading our filtering software. That's something we have to be in compliance with as part of our E-rate funding to make sure that students using a device is limited where they can go. And what we mean by limits are to inappropriate sites that a parent would not want their child on. So, that is all upgraded by Rich. We are working with the Co-op in Brookline to purchase a facilities trailer and truck. Since Lance has come on board, he has used his personal trailer on multiple occasions and has really demonstrated the need. We forget sometimes how much we used to do through U-Hauls. And we believe this will be very cost-effective. The actual dollar amount may change because we are looking at, is it better to lease or own this vehicle? In some ways, there's benefits to both sides of that equation. So, Kelly's continuing to do her research, but we will be getting that. We'll be adding the bollards, which we had in our capital improvement plan, to the front of each building. I'm not exactly sure. I'm not exactly sure what they'll look like. We don't want just cement posts. We'd like to have something a little more attractive than that, but kind of increase our security. The only thing we're looking at in terms of the outside areas, we'll be updating the playgrounds and the swings. We'll be doing our annual mulch. We'll be adding more benches because we've found a greater need for our students to be outside and enjoying it. And we're adding picnic tables. One of the pieces that didn't make it through the budget was a pavilion. What we will do is we'll look at where we are with this budget in the spring. And if the capability is there to make that happen, we will. One of the pieces that I enjoyed is working with the Hollis Budget Com. And, you know, they've always taken great pains to stay away from educational pieces. So when they give us guidance, we try to accommodate their needs because they're representing the taxpayers, and I think it's worked very well. So again, we're looking at a little over 3.2% increase in the budgets. And I'll take any questions you may have. Kelly posts the budgets by rounds on the district site, so they're there. And we're getting into public hearing season and all of those things that'll be coming up. And we'll be coordinating that with a joint meeting with the Hollis Budget Committee as we get into the month of January, which it's hard to believe we're thinking about January.
Discussion.
Just a question on the pavilion. Where is the $12,000 price point?
The price point is about $32,000.
Oh, it's $32,000?
Thirty-two.
Okay, because on here, the...
Yes, and that, one of the things that we have seen drastic, which I'm sure anybody who's gone out to price something, is the astronomical changes in costs.
Okay.
It's incredible. So it's kind of almost like, if you want the work, we'll do it, but we'll do it at this price.
Yeah.
And it's not something, I mean, we've proven for almost two years now that we have good outside spaces. And I think as the economy shifts and pivots, prices will come down. Do you need to address them?
I was just going to say that was the price over the summer, a rough estimate. And as we actually got down into the nitty-gritty and got real prices for right now, it, the price jumped.
Yeah, makes sense. Just, I'd like to see it happen, so.
Yep.
Yeah, this budgeting process that you guys, that I think Kelly and Andy instituted a few years back of having round one, round two, round three, round four, the final budget round, has been so elucidating and illuminating. It shows us the thinking, the patterns, and even price shifts across a short period of time, like it's been three months, and already we're seeing a tripling of cost in that particular item, so.
I also appreciate that we can kind of compare year to year, you know, kind of where we are, you know, things that we don't necessarily, don't necessarily make it to the final round. And this year, we may see it, revisit it in future years. And I appreciate being able to see that history.
Same, absolutely.
I just had a question. Can you just explain, under the Maintenance Expendables Trust, the asbestos windows?
Sure. If you were to go into HBS and go down the hallway to the cafeteria, the very last room on the right is a conference room.
Yep.
And it has what used to be outside windows, original to the building. The asbestos is in the putty that holds the glass in. So the asbestos is encapsulated, so it's fine. But Kelly, first because we're mandated, but second, it's the right thing to do, has an asbestos plant for each building that has it. And every year, we try to eliminate that. Now, we did a lot of that when we did the energy projects and took out things. Those windows, surprisingly, were one of the items that just spiked because, again, there was so much business out there. It was like, I'll come and do it, but at a really high rate. So that's what we'll be removing, and we'll be replacing that with some new, more modern windows. And if I went down the first-grade corridor, I call them the fishbowl windows. Same thing, the putty. Or if I was in the first-grade classroom and I looked down to the bottom floor of those rooms that have those windows, so that's what we're talking about. But the architects looked at it during H-Smart and everything. It's all encapsulated and enclosed because of things that have been done over the years. But it is something that, if we could just be done with that, I think we'd be, I think we're almost done with the asbestos at HBS.
And on the asbestos, we got, it got preempted by finding asbestos under the old boilers that were removed and disposed of that had not been identified even by the state.
Right.
So it was a surprise, and work had to come to a halt. And an asbestos, you know, hazmat team, the asbestos specialists, removal specialists, had to come in and clean all that out before. It's all trapped. It's not loose. It's not capable of being, of escaping. The state keeps closed tabs on all of that. Further questions? Okay, I have a whole bunch, if that's okay. Sorry. I'm interested in a number of things. I see, if you look at the budget pages, I'm sorry, I had to close my little tab so I don't know what page we're on. The very, the last page where the final summaries are. On the bond principal and bond interest, how come bond interest is negative $13,000? That's a wonderful thing to see, an interest payment. How come it's neg...
The difference?
Yeah.
It's a change from year to year.
Right, why is there a change from year to year on this?
Because it's just like your mortgage. If you go further along, you pay more to principal and less to interest.
So we're still in that period where each year it's going to be a little more before it turns into a plateau of multiple years of the same payment every year? Is that right?
The principal's going up.
Yeah, the principal's going up every year, and the interest is going down. Oh, I see, so it's an accounting matter, it's not a cash matter?
Yeah.
Now I understand, okay.
The bank got their interest.
No, I understand, I understand who is winning on the money side. I just wanted to understand the notation of a negative quantity in interest. I was hoping you had a different answer. I have a question about the special ed secretary. You're moving her, or the person, the position, it's not the person, from four to five days a week, and that's shared across the two buildings. Again, you pointed out, I think, Andy, that this, the increased need is due to an increased number of student cases as opposed to any change in what we're providing necessarily.
It's mainly student-driven, and I would use the example of how many more children we're getting in our three- and four-year programs, three- and four-year-olds.
Yes, yes. But it's not necessarily just that. There's also, populations change from year to year.
Yes, it's also the compliance issues. So that secretary, you know, I mean, every time you're talking about an IEP meeting, the notices going out, all the legal pieces around that, it just continues to grow.
Right, I don't think the general public, I don't even think special ed parents appreciate the documentation responsibilities and mandates that every staff member in our employment faces. Everything has to be documented on a, especially in special ed, with a very strict timeline, et cetera. The music teacher increase from .6 to .8 is due to, say it again. You told us twice, and I can't remember.
Well, it's the growth of the music program and trying to meet all the needs of the varied students.
So as we have enough students, we have to add sections for them.
Correct, and it's, again, it's giving the students who have that talent for a musical instrument, you know, those are smaller sections because they're very much hands-on type of pieces.
And that does not trigger benefits, correct?
I do not think so. I would have to check with Kerry just to be sure because each district is a certain point, when you hit a certain level, and each district is different. So off the top of my head, I don't know.
All right, maybe, it might be good to know for when we do our public hearing, right?
Yeah, for sure. I just remember when we had the environmental science teacher was at .8 and was brought to 1.0 to full-time. That was the difference, was the benefits. So my guess is the six to eight is not the .6.
I think it's somewhere around .83.
.83 is...
Triggers benefits.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Because that, of course, adds a whole iceberg of cost underneath, which is valuable if it's the right thing, but it's good to know about. I love to see that the directed sub, you know, for food services and the directed classroom sub are still there. Substitute teachers are just so difficult to find, and it's such an important position to have a stability in. I love seeing that the powers are there for the additional students who need them. Okay, so the next thing you mentioned that got my attention, I'm going as fast as I can. Licenses, promotions, okay. The pavilion, I understand, it's shocking how much more of those costs went up to. I'm sorry, there was something here, what was it? The truck?
Yep.
Okay, since I'm not a vehicles person, is there any way that the district could benefit financially from any kind of sharing with the town's fleet? You know, the town is able to get police cars and fleets and other equipment like that. And I wonder if there was some potential savings through that avenue?
I mean, it's something we could discuss and look at. I think it's time to see, the first successful purchase for us on the school side was the three vans that replaced the buses for vocational lab because it gives us a lot more flexibility with our students, which means they're in class a lot quicker and earlier. So this is for our first kind of shared piece of equipment. Now, we do have a shared tractor. Basically, we use it to high school. But, you know, these are the type of things we have to start looking at because there is a cost avoidance when you start to add up how many times, you know, the chairs or tables gets transferred between buildings and things like that.
No, I wasn't suggesting we share a truck. I was wondering if we could find a, utilize the town's purchasing power or rental power, whatever it is, to find something that we want at a reduced cost because we're buying in bulk or whatever.
We can absolutely have that conversation.
Uh, since they have that going on on the town side. And then the bollards.
I still hope you can do a painting kind of competition for the bollards. I think that would be really fun for the kids.
Yeah, I think that would be.
Okay, sorry, I'm so sorry, there's so many things on here. It's just this huge thing that we have to ask about. Special ed trust is in good shape, right? You're not feeling like with the growth in the population of students this year, every cohort's different, that we need to dip into that so far?
We're good, I will say. Where that has become a saving grace in one of our other districts is for those unexpected move-ins. You know, and that's the piece, if you just drive around town, there are homes for sale. And we're planning a budget from 18 months from now, not knowing who's going to live in that home. And one child can significantly change a budget.
Well, in my neighborhood, we have three, like, seven kids under seven with another home that's moved in with two more kids pulling in the wagon. So we're definitely getting that replacement at the minimum. The asbestos we talked about, I'm just thrilled that we've got the sprinklers all done. Can we just say, the sprinklers are in, the buildings are that much safer. I'm so thrilled about that. And then the job, I guess I wanted to talk about that a little more, the new position, the compliance communication specialist. This compliance piece, I read through, like we all did, the, this new upgraded job description. I remember when a former board member who's in the public relations profession had, you know, really strongly recommended that a position like this be created. And at the time, there wasn't an appetite for that. And the demands and needs of communicating had not become so acute because we still had some representation in print media. And that's just completely gone. I mean, it's very difficult to get information to the general public from the district. I had at the time, this was many years ago at this point, felt some reservation about it because the last thing I would like to see as a taxpayer, as a parent, as a citizen, is a PR campaign from my public institutions. I would be very unhappy if this turned into, you know, a position that put out polished, bright and shiny only. We need communications, not PR. So this job description made me really happy because I volunteered at the SAU for photocopying thousands and thousands of documents to help HR, photocopying and printing and filing and fold, you know, when there's been a staff shortage that was acute and giant mountains of papers to, just for clerical, you know, unskilled labor, I can do the alphabet. And watching the phones ring off the hook, et cetera, it's an incredibly busy place. Everybody is so saturated with tasks and work. And this job description makes sense to me. This person is adding value to the SAU's workload and in a way that communicates that to the public. And that makes the staff, the district, and the public work in a much more integrated, productive way. And I just say, I just think this is a terrific rethinking of the original idea and rethinking of how this position could operate to help you all do what it is you're doing and take some of the load off of your shoulders. You know, when I see Gina standing at a photocopier making a million copies, it just makes me crazy. Like, is that why we have all of her skill and talents can collate copies? So I just wanted to make that comment. I think this looks really tremendous. And there was one item in there that I highlighted, and the highlighting disappeared.
While Tammy is searching for that, I just want to chime in on that position as well. I think you're absolutely optimizing the position by adding that compliance piece into it. So I think that was on point with the recommendation that came down and following it. In my three years on this board, I have consistently heard, and no louder than in the last year, how much our citizenry wants consistent communication from our districts and our SAU. They want it, they need it, they desire it. They've become incredibly electronic savvy. Tammy commented that there is no paper option anymore. There really truly isn't, not one that is consistent and actually gets to every, every home. We need to have that communication happening electronically as well as on paper. And so I think that this is a great position. And I think we have the right price point going for it, knowing what I know in industry. So props on this. I'm happy about this, thank you.
I didn't, so you go ahead.
I'll jump in.
Please.
So I have a question, and this is based on, we heard a large amount of public input at the last Hollis Budget Committee meeting. We had a fair number of people that were questioning whether we should start with this as a contractor position to, I guess, avoid the benefit costs associated with the full-time position and then also allow us to assess whether this is sort of a temporary need or something that really, you know, we do need long-term.
First, the days of the consultant, not getting an hourly rate that has benefits built in, are kind of gone. And we see that in OT, PT, speech and language, all those services. When we can't hire somebody, we're asked to pay $180, $200 an hour because, again, the agencies are not going to get employees unless they're able to offer some sort of benefits. And I think right now, where the, there aren't enough workers for jobs, it's very difficult. In terms of the, I'm just going to highlight a couple of things because I just said to myself the other day, okay, what are we talking about for compliance? That kind of Gina and I do all the time. These are a yearly event periodically throughout the different portions of the year. So there's indoor air quality, 21st Century Learning Survey, school safety data collection, A12B class and staffing form, A12D, the central office personnel, A12E, the homeschool count, A12F, the teacher attainment and average salary. There's a survey about the school board, there's a survey about the teachers' salary scale. Those are all required. Then we switch over. We have IDA special ed funds for both regular ed and preschool. That is for Hollis, Brookline, and the Co-op. We have Title II, Hollis, Brookline Co-op, Title IV, Hollis, Brookline Co-op. We have general assurances for the Hollis, Brookline, and the Co-op. We have GEPA compliance, which is the financial end of it that we have to file for Hollis, Brookline, and the Co-op. Then we have, because we're a separate SAU as well, we have the SAU 41 program assurances for any of the money that grants come through us. We have the SAU 41 ESR funds, then we have the GEPA statement. So as you see, there's a lot of repetition, and I wish I could say it's one time and we're done, but Gina can share, it's not. It's very, very difficult.
And again, your point that it's four different ones.
Correct.
Yep.
We have to comply with the National Lunch Program and provide them all their data. Professional development requirements for about 500 staff and pairs with the DOE. The DOE 25 that you sign every year and all those financial requirements. The 14C data for adequacy, which means we won't get paid unless that's correct. And that's one of those, it doesn't get submitted until everything works out. It just keeps getting rejected. We're required to do ESOL data collection, and that's three times a year to chat progress. Every year, the lead... Every year, the legislature decides that they're going to change some things, and that means every year that we have to go back to our policy books, like we're doing this year. There's probably, probably at least 12 that were impacted directly by legislative updates. All criminal background checks go through. It used to just be me. The state has provided greater leeway now, and it's myself and Gina. So that's for every new member, that's every volunteer, and that's a decision we made to do every single volunteer, but we just decided if somebody was going to be in our buildings, that we wanted to know that, you know, there was a comfort level. We're required to do the civil rights data collection and annually do the policy manuals as well as periodically update the articles of agreement for the co-op. And those are just the things that like are constant every single year, let alone what comes down, like next year is a math review for curriculum. So that means there's a certain chunk of Gina's time that's already committed next year to math, you know? And I spend more time on the facility side, so my last couple of years have been the Hollis projects. If all goes well, it'll be moving over to the Brookline projects. Lance does what I'll call the day-to-day and annual projects, like he oversaw the parking lots being repaved, all of those type of issues. You know, any unit ventilator that's broken, those type of things now go to Lance. It used to come to Kelly and I. So we do believe we can become more efficient. And I will note, we have one receptionist and one administrative assistant in our SAU. That's it. We have no administrative support for Gina and I, and that's somewhat by choice because of, about seven years ago, I traded my secretary because we needed more people in the business office. And overseeing the money is probably the most important thing we do, so we made that conscious choice, and I think it's worked out very well because now we produce budget documents like you see tonight, and we get regular expense and revenue reports. Again, there are some new board members, but when I, when I arrived, boards wouldn't know in May what their balance was. So they didn't know if they were going to be in the red or the black, or they had money to spend or not spend. You know, pretty much every quarter, you get the good, the bad, and the ugly from Donna in her reports. And that's because we've, we've staffed that office appropriately, and I, I don't see the number of requirements being reduced. So I know people get upset, and it appears that there's more overhead being created, but the overhead is in response to policies and laws and legal requirements. So, you know, I think the live free or die local control is, is a great motto, but more and more, we're getting top-down that boards and SAUs have to respond to.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I think highlighting the compliance piece will help you convince the, the taxpayers that this position isn't a knee-jerk reaction to the current environment.
Right.
Agree.
I, I'm sorry, I remembered what I wanted to ask you. It's interesting that qualifications are a high school and not further. You're talking about something that sounds on the surface like it has a lot of writing skills and, and, and vocabulary skills, et cetera. You feel confident, I don't mean to denigrate a high school diploma, I'm just accustomed to, I don't, I, I, I just want to make sure I understand as opposed to criticizing any, anything in here. You feel like that level, you don't need somebody with a BA in accounting?
No, I think what will happen is that the interview committee will sort through that. I think sometimes what we see is there are people who have built a career off their experience and their knowledge, and yet necessarily didn't always have the degree, but have that proven track record of success, and we didn't want to discount those people in this advertisement.
No, absolutely, I understand. Because I'm sitting next to an Ivy League accounting major who's an auditor for, you know, Arthur Andersen and Manhattan for many years, so, you know, hire her.
I just like it when she tells me the budget's okay.
It's very intimidating, especially that she's so nice, I just don't know what she's thinking or seeing.
Moving on.
Thank you.
The, the next piece is the Ford Lund Lane, and I wanted to put this in again because from our discussion last time, Kelly put in a placeholder. But I want to just kind of inform the board, I'd like to spend some good time at our January meeting, kind of just discussing this and deciding if the timing's right. All right? I mean, the SAU building is, is got some issues, as we all know, but at the same time, again, talking with Paula and at Leadership Today, it came up again, we're seeing increased numbers of three and four-year-olds in kindergarten and in programming issues. So my reservation is not necessarily doing some sort of study, it's doing the study for the right piece, you know? And should we be looking at a preschool slash kindergarten that can meet many of the needs that we're seeing nowadays? Because we do have a great site over at Ford Lund Lane with that field and everything. So I'm recommending the placeholder stay in, that we have a discussion on this because from the report that you received on the property, it doesn't make financial sense to put the money into the bond. It would be a wonderful building, it'd look great and be highly usable, but you'd still have a whole section that was not ADA compliant and those issues. So in his expert opinion, he just doesn't feel it'd be money well spent. So that's, that's my kind of caution of not wanting to jump too quickly because again, it's solid, it's not going anywhere. We've survived there. We're going to talk about doing some bathroom upgrades because whether we stay or go, they need to have to happen anyways. But I just really wanted to put that on your radar as the landlords of, you know, and we'll try to bring you more information on what our vision is, even though it's not fully vetted yet, and what it would look like there. Because we are running into space issues because of the programming needs of individuals. You know, children come with more equipment, more things are required. And again, I say this more just as somebody who is in awe of what our teachers do when I go and visit the three and four-year-old programs, because I'll meet kids at the beginning of the year, and I can think of one young man that I've kind of got to know, and to now see him when he's on the playground run over and want to give a high five from where, where he entered a program. That is just moving. And again, it just proves the concept of what we're doing is correct. So before we take this leap to what the next thing is, let's really vet what the next thing would look like because if we were to move preschool or kindergarten to a different building, that would free up Paula with the ability to actually have a cafeteria. And, you know, so we wouldn't be wasting space, we'd be repurposing space and preparing for the, you know, the, the next wave of students that are going to come to Hollis and Brookline. Because they're definitely coming, there's no doubt about it. You know, when I talk to families purchasing homes, you know, they're making this choice knowing what the tax bill looks like, but making the sacrifice for the children because of the schools.
Do you foresee any type of subject matter expertise to help kind of put that vision of what that facility might look like and where it might be located?
I, I do, and I'm going to cheat because we still have H-Smart going on, and on there we have got to know some experts. One is our architect. And, you know, again, for what I would say, you know, cost-effective money that we could probably find in the budget, we can start more of that, that global view, and maybe it's next year that we're doing more of the, what, what the whole thing is going to cost. So it may be a new SAU is two or three years away because it will have potentially a couple features, one being play, you know, preschool, kindergarten service environments as well as an attachment of the SAU.
Might we expect some sort of expenditure approval in January as part of the conversation to get that work started?
That, that could be the way to go. I think if we were going to remove it off a warrant now, our budget is running tight right now, just, we actually froze the Hollis budget yesterday.
Okay.
Really, no other reason than to catch up. We've had some special ed costs and things that come in, and it's one of those things that I'm a, I'm a big fan of freezing something. Let's figure out exactly where we are before we, we purchase something that we may have to decide not to do. So I could see me coming back closer to the April-May for that type of expenditure because what I would do it out of is the, the funds from this year that would not be reserved.
I see, okay.
So you wouldn't expect to see work done on this until?
The summer of the year.
Summer, right.
Right, because the other piece, you have to understand, there's the potential to be doing, trying to address some what I'll call excessive heat issues at the high school because our third floor, it, it's just a very difficult environment to learn in with those early fall days and, and, in the spring. And so we're just trying to balance all the different expenses so that, you know, our taxpayer isn't getting that sense of, do they realize how much is coming down the pike? And I wish we could say we were all done H-Smart, and we, we are from a technical standpoint, but we're still in the hole punch list. And if you recall, the board was gracious enough to reserve funds for Air Handel III. So as soon as we get through H-Smart, that's the next place we go is to Air Handel III, and that'll probably be this spring/summer project. So there's still a lot going on, and there's a lot of improvements in this budget, like new floor here, phase one of buying new cafeteria tables, some new flooring in Paula's building, the asbestos removal of those windows. So, you know, I, I don't want to give the board any sense that we are not, we are making progress every year. Sometimes it's leaps and bounds, and sometimes it's incremental.
My daughter, my child is 21, this floor was here when she came to the fourth grade, and they were talking then about it needed replacing.
Right.
So that's 11 years plus however old it was then.
But if, if we went back just during my tenure working with Kelly and looked at all the capital improvements that have been checked off because of having a logical sequential plan, and it's not a surprise to the taxpayers, because to Amy's earlier point, if it's, doesn't make it through this year's budget, it usually becomes a priority for next year's, and it's not a shock. And again, people understand, you wouldn't ask for it multiple years if you didn't truly need it, you know? It's when you ask for something and it never shows back up again, and there's no reason why it's not there.
Andy, the report mentions a concern about the files and records that are stored in the attic. Are you exploring alternative storage options?
Yes, we have that wonderful storage unit that's air-conditioned that has taken a, a great load of HR pieces, which has allowed us to disperse the weight. The other piece, special ed has become more streamlined than it was, and from a legal standpoint, when a child reaches age, we send them a notification, the family can either decide to come and pick up the child's files if they'd like to have them, or they can have us destroy them, which we do. So that, that has gone well. And I think again, if, if you know Kelly, she, and most of the women that I work with are very much type A. I'm a Piler, so like, they don't necessarily like to come into, there's two things. They don't come into my office because it's cold, because I don't like the heat, and then I think my, my sorting system is not what they would have in their office. But it works well for us, but I think that's why, under Kelly's leadership, she's very much that, that type A and always has a plan. And when we get delayed, that's okay, because she's got it right back in the pipeline.
Which is amazing.
So that takes us to...
Can we have an inquisition of Lance until he fixes this? This drives me crazy. Put the board in the box, like a Jack in the Box.
So now we're to deliberations, Madam Chair.
Uh, no, we, deliberations already, but wait, 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 business office memo.
That's under deliberations.
Oh, that's true. All right. I'm sorry, I got ahead of my head. So to see what action the board will take regarding the memo submitted by the business administrator regarding the renovation of the bathroom.
So, to talk about Brooke's point earlier, the escalation of costs, and we sat here last year talking about redoing the bathroom, the estimate was $15,000. That estimate to do the second floor bathroom, which is to remove the tub and create a hallway so that you don't go through Lance's office to get to the other offices, has now become an actual number to $34,000.
Oh, my goodness.
Now, I don't think the long-term vision based on what we talked about is to stay there, but the piece of the puzzle that Kelly and I talked about, the two, two bathrooms are key, you know, and acceptable bathrooms, and getting rid of the tub, I think will also help us from a resale point of view because I think it would remain commercial state, space. So she was kind enough to provide us, the current balance is $88,946. If you were to approve the bathroom project of $34,000, which have already technically approved 15 of it, the ending balance would be $54,946. We would be adding $23,970, so our ending balance would be right back in the, the $78,000. And really, except for what I'll say, minor repairs, painting, things like that, I don't see a, a large expense as we kind of work our way to what the new vision will be. So we would like to have you approve the $34,000 for the bathroom project, and Kelly will begin working with the Lance and the construction teams, and upstairs will be reconfigured around that bathroom. The tub will be gone, and you'll have direct access into, I'll say, Linda and Donna's offices, and the accounts receivable, accounts payroll, without having to go into Lance's office or, in some ways, almost into Kelly's office.
So is this all?
Can we have a motion so we can work within the framework of a motion?
Okay.
Please. It's in the, this is motion, this is a motion to schedule a public hearing. No, there's a motion.
I move to schedule a public hearing, that's, is that what you're wanting?
That's what the motion is.
Right, so I'd like to have the motion, so we're just talking.
Oh, to discuss.
Within the format of that.
Okay. I move to schedule a public hearing notifying the, notifying of the request to expend additional funds from the SAU building expendable trust fund.
Second, thank you. I'm sorry, Carol, go ahead.
No, 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 you're good. Thank you for keeping us in line. Are these all material costs?
This is materials, labor, moving plumbing, creating this hallway that doesn't exist.
No, I mean the additional $19,000.
Pretty much, yeah. It's, it's labor and materials.
Okay.
And a big chunk of that is the labor.
The increase?
Why has the labor increased that much? Did they discuss that with you?
Well, the, the, the labor increase are what we're seeing everywhere because they're struggling to get subcontractors just like everybody else, so they're passing those costs on to us now.
Gotcha. I just wanted to, yeah, oh, sorry, go ahead.
And again, you know, we don't know if the price will go down. That's, that's the big role to die. If we waited until October or the, the economy crashed with that price, we don't know, it may. I would think it would. Because, you know, it's funny, when we started the original H-Step project, we got a price on the solar panels that we couldn't believe they were basically, I'll say, so cheap. And then a year later, we came back and things we thought were going to be cheap had, now we had the tariffs and the embargo and, you know, so again, that's kind of the market we're in, and we were shocked. But again, the piece that Kelly's looking for is just for her to advertise the public hearing, not saying yes to the money tonight, just that we can have the public hearing, we'll post it, and then citizens can come and weigh in if that's something they want or don't want to do.
Sure, correct. I just wanted to get a little more detail on, on the background.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Would we have photographs for them to see? I think it's important to produce some kind of documentation so people understand.
We'll get you photos of the tub.
I mean, I'm the one who took a picture for, I have a photo. But make sure you take a picture of the entire...
Are you interested in the tub? He's probably going to cut you a deal.
No, I'd like...
Flower bed, right? I, I'd like to suggest that the tub is repurposed as the, one of the bollards in front of you.
There you go.
Have you guys considered that?
A planter out front?
Yeah.
All right. Is there further discussion?
I hope not.
I hope not. All in favor? Thank you, 500. And the next item is to see what action the board will take regarding Policy DAF, administration of federal grant funds given its second reading.
I move to accept the second reading of Policy DAF, administration of federal grant funds. funds.
Second.
Were any changes made since first reading?
No changes. This is just an example, another example of all the legal changes that, you know, laws were passed over the summer, and now that impacts our policy and how we administer grants and make decisions. So...
Further discussion?
Yes, one's huge.
All right.
Ready to vote? All in favor?
What are we, what are we voting on, just accepting the second reading?
Second reading.
Got it. Thank you.
All right.
Is there a reason why we need a third reading on this? Like, we didn't make changes in first reading, and we're not making changes now?
Well, changes were presented for the first reading, and, but then between first and second, there have been no changes.
There is some text that's in blue, not links, but a couple of them, like DAF dash four, the word contractor in Section D, things like that. Or is there significance there, or is that just accidental?
The DAF just is supposed to take you to the DAF Section 4.
Oh, so that is a link. Okay.
Do we normally put links?
Yeah.
Sometimes it is.
It happens.
Active links?
Yeah.
Both online. When it's, when policy references another policy.
Yep.
I think
Oh, and the contractor one is a link to, it's going to the definition of contractor on law.cornell.edu.
But should it, I don't recall that being in a policy.
Yeah, I don't.
So in terms of the three readings, you know, the convention is three readings, and one of the reasons is to give the public a chance to digest it. Given that these changes are a response to recently changed legislation, I personally would favor, as long as the district isn't anxious to get this put into place quickly, you know, I feel personally that we should stay with the convention while we can.
Is there urgency? Do we need to get this in place to be compliant?
No, I mean, at the end of the day, we have to follow the law. So we're going to follow the law, which supersedes the policy. So this is just sort of like housekeeping.
Gotcha. Rob, is that okay? Do you feel like you need to
Yeah, I think it's just important to revisit the reasons why we're extending it. I just, I always kind of question if we're not making any changes, but specifically, this one is, there's so much content.
Yeah.
I think it makes sense to keep it open for another reading.
Great.
Just in case we got anyone in the community that wants to chime in on it.
Excellent. Thank you.
And for those, for that link to the definition of contractor, is that something essential? Because that hasn't appeared, I think, in any other policy.
I don't recall something having, yeah, a word having
I've never seen a word going to a law definition page. So, I don't know. If it's necessary, that's fine, if they want it in there, whatever.
It's not necessary at all.
But you've circled it. You'll look at it.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
Just noticing. Thank you.
Next policy, my dear.
Okay.
EEAEA, which sounds like a kindergarten song.
Okay. I'll sing it.
Why stop at any
I move to accept the first reading of Policy EEAEA, mandatory drug and alcohol testing as presented.
I was just commenting on why stop it. Only three Es for the name of the policy.
Right.
You could add three or four additional.
And this one...
Any discussion of this draft? This is a first reading, so...
Yeah.
Any inputs?
Let me just pull up the, let me just scroll to the... So this one, there's some added language that came out. The, the underlying piece at the beginning of it just sort of provides the reason for the policy. And then some other things that are added are some definitions. And then we're taking out the, at the end, there was a part for employee and supervisor signatures, but that's not standard in our policy, so that was the reasoning, right?
Correct. So the, a sample, or a copy of the policy will be provided to the bus company every year, for them to approve and then abide by. And this is, the bulk of this is all just legally mandated, so it's already in agreement with what's present in our bus contract, transportation contract. So it's just bringing our policy up to date with legal requirements and removing superfluous items such as the signature page.
Very good. So, ready for a vote? All in favor? First reading? Thank you. I, I just don't see anything else on our agenda. Did I miss something? Is that it?
Do we have a non-meeting, correct?
Do we still have a non-meeting?
Right.
Yep.
Oh, we don't, wow. We don't need it for...
Okay, you don't need it for negotiations, and we don't need a...
So it appears we don't need, have a non-meeting need?
Why don't we have a five-minute non-meeting?
Okay, very well. Sorry. It wasn't clear. All right. So the business, the public business of the Hollis School Board meeting has concluded. We are going to call, roll call, and go in the non-meeting now. And from there, we will adjourn the general public meeting without further business.
No, we'll adjourn first.
Well, without further public, without